Okay, in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice in this regular meeting of the planning board of the township of Franklin has been provided. If I could just ask all the board members, the applicant, the professionals, to speak directly into the microphone so that the recording secretary can properly process minutes. And you will see a signing sheet on the table in front of you if you could please sign in. That's, I'm talking about the applicants and professionals who are at the hearing. So before we go into the pledge and everything else, I just want to make some announcements on the agenda. So if you are here for Awakened Dawn LLC, that's carried to December 7th, 2022, with no further notification needed. If you're here for BH31 Schoolhouse Road, that is carried to September 2nd with no further notification needed. So if you're here to speak on any of those applications, come back to those dates. The one application we have tonight is 58 Atrium Drive LLC. So with that, those announcements, let's all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Chairman, or seeing the only one I heard from was Sammy Siobhan asked to be excused this evening.
Yeah, I saw the email.
Councilman in Barson?
Here.
Paul Hauck?
Here.
Mahir Rafiq?
Here.
Theodore Chase?
Here.
Jennifer Ragnar?
Here.
Mustafa Midsray?
Here.
Charles Brown?
Here.
Robert Thomas?
Here.
And Chairman Mercini?
Here. So no minutes, no resolutions, no discussion? None of that? Okay. So before I open to the public, just some ground rules. Two minutes per speaker. We're max for an hour because we have an application to get to and not keep everybody waiting. Christine will start the timer after, as soon as you state your name and address. Two minutes, I'm going to cut you off. If you don't have anything new to add to the previous speaker, then please kindly, you know, if you're going to say the exact same thing, we don't need to hear it 50 times. There's no yielding of time. You take one minute, that doesn't mean the next person gets three. All right? So with those rules, I'll make a motion to open to the public. All in favor?
Aye.
Meetings open to the public. Come to the microphone, please state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Kiki Anastasikos. I live on 3204 Enclave Circle at Canal Walk. And you probably remember us from last time. We have been here several times with our blue shirts. Well, tonight, we came to remind the planning board that the property on Metlers Road, where B9 is proposing to build two spec warehouses, is included in the list of Franklin Township's designated scenic corridor, which is right there. And in June 2003, the township's scenic corridor ordinance went into effect. And in 2019, it was incorporated in the township's master plan. The purpose of the scenic corridor ordinance is, and I'm quoting from the actual document, the official document, "One, to protect the township's aesthetic resources along designated scenic roadways. Two, to direct development so that will enhance the visual character of the township. And three, to protect the township's remaining open spaces." End of quote. Building the two warehouses on Metlers and Schoolhouse, which is right next to our Canal Walk development, is against the true intent of the scenic corridor ordinance. It is our firm belief that approving B9's application for the two warehouses amounts to nothing less than a blatant violation of your own scenic corridor ordinance. We request that you reject this application. Thank you.
Mr. Shalbert, I understand the public's right to speak and how they feel about different things, but right now, we're getting urged to reject an application that's not an application. And this is supposed to be a session for general public planning comments. I'll be happy to hear about the issues concerning warehouses. I've been concerned about warehouses for months, and I've been speaking about it for months. But we're not here in this session to discuss a specific project.
I agree. When that, when if that application comes before us, that would be the time to comment on it.
My name is Ann Cohen, and I live at 66 Bayard Road, and I'm speaking about my backyard. According to the scenic corridor ordinance, a scenic corridor is an area that is visible from the scenic roadway as identified in the township master plan, I know it's repetitious, let me finish, that may be exhibit one or more of the following features. One, panoramic vistas or natural built environments. Unique geological and topographic features or natural use of historical significance. Extended, unobstructive view sheds. Mature woodlands. Hedge grows. Dense tree stands and substantial individual trees. Fallow open fields or active agricultural operations. Water bodies or watercourses. The property contains all of the above, which we would promise would remain as such. B9 Schoolhouse is developing within the scenic corridor. Scenic corridor shall extend 1,000 linear feet.
They're commenting again on an application that's not before, even before the board yet, let alone tonight.
Excuse me, I haven't mentioned one application. I'm simply saying something factual about what's happening in my backyard.
Yeah, but you did reference, you did reference the application that we haven't even heard yet.
Respectfully, I would like to finish my two minutes.
Well, you can finish your two minutes.
B9 Schoolhouse is developing within the scenic corridor if it so should happen. Scenic corridor shall extend 1,000 linear feet in both directions from the center line of the scenic roadway as identified in your township master plan for total corridor width of 2,000 feet. Whether this does or does not happen, it is your master plan. The scenic corridor guidelines are very specific and developed by Franklin Township, where we pay our taxes for the good of the township. It is fully expected that this will be complying with all ordinances without exception. Thank you for your time.
So let me just, let me just pause for a second because we've had two speakers already reference the scenic corridor ordinance. So let me try to clear up any misconceptions because I think we have some misconceptions on that. The scenic corridor ordinance is not a weapon that can be used to prevent development. It is a set of standards, much like a business district may have standards, where certain landscaping, maybe you don't want driveways or loading docks in front, you want them in the rear. You want to try to preserve some landscaping in front, or you want the applicant to enhance landscaping in front. But it's nothing that by law could ever be used to reject an application. It's nothing that can be used to say a land shouldn't be developed. If you don't want land developed, you have to buy it. You cannot zone it into inutility. You cannot use an ordinance or a standard like a scenic corridor to reject an application. So if where you're going is trying to, you know, get a hook in something by using a scenic corridor ordinance, I can tell you that's a waste of time. With that, please.
Okay, I, based on what you just said, I'm just indicating that, am I understanding?
Can you give yourself?
I'm sorry, stands the heart check on four Constitution Way in Somerset. My understanding of the, is that anybody is willing, is able to develop a property that they've purchased. However, they have to comply to the laws and the ordinances in the community. Therefore, the scenic corridor is an ordinance that they would have to comply with, all of the items set forth in that particular ordinance. And we're just pointing out the fact that right now, understanding the application as it was, as it is, does not comply to that in any way, shape, or form. More specifically, in the setbacks of the particular buildings or the construction of the parking lot or the roadways that are going to be leading into it. There's got to be adequate foliage or whatever to produce a visible acceptance to meet those particular, the surrounding countryside. So in my mind, I'm wondering if this board is expected is going to enforce the ordinance as it sits.
I can say absolutely, and I don't disagree with you. You're mentioning things that are within our rights to ask the applicant to do, in terms of setbacks, enhanced landscaping, the layout of their project, if it lies in a scenic corridor. There's definitely things the planning board can do to shape that development. I just want everybody to understand that when you mention open space and things of that nature, that's not what the scenic corridor ordinance is intended to do, is not to say, well, you can't develop here because it's a scenic corridor.
No, I don't think anybody's expecting that. We're expecting them to comply with the ordinance as it's written.
And we will make sure that they do that.
Hi, I'm Beverly Rebenvitz at 67 Bayard Road in Canal Walk, and I too am representing the Citizens Warehouse Action Group. I'm not going to read my whole thing because it is repetitious of some of the things, but they're quotes from your ordinance. So it says that it will, new buildings will be screened, they will be from view. So we just want to make sure whenever there's an application, that we can still live in our homes and look at our backyards and not see this 44-foot wall wherever it may be built on, whatever plot it may be built on. We are concerned about contamination of runoff, of late-night noises. I have, I'm right on Metlers, and I've talked in the past. The trucks are running at seven in the morning, the 18-wheelers, and I know there's a weight limit there now, but they're still running there. And I know you don't have a policeman just to put on every street. We're concerned about the wildlife. We bought there and paid extra money for the premium property for the scenic view. I moved into Franklin in '74, raised my children here, the school's here, and I wanted to retire here when they built Canal Walk. My backyard will be ruined. I will never be able to use it again if you continue the way you're developing in Franklin. It's very, very sad. You must do something to correct the horrific errors you've made by poor zoning right next to Canal Walk, for which you changed the zoning. Thank you.
Janet Goldstein, 47 Saratoga Court, Canal Walk. Today, I was supposed to speak today on the use of native plants in the scenic corridor, but instead, I decided to go by the library and I picked up.
Miss, can you please speak into the mic? Thank you.
And I picked up a copy of this old book, Franklin Township, Somerset County, A History, and surprise, Metlers Lane, From Schoolhouse to Amwell, is on it. And I found the following sentence, "To preserve roadside features and maintain the visual appeal of Franklin's scenic rural areas, the township planners recognized that it was essential to monitor development along these rustic corridors. In January 1991, a township planning board amendment to the master plan established a standard set, a set of standards to guide their future development." All these people in the blue shirts are retired or semi-retired, and they bought homes in Canal Walk expecting to spend their days playing shuffleboard and mahjong. We never envisioned having to spend our time instead researching the various township ordinances and going to planning board and council meetings. While the planning board is supposed to approve commercial development which complies with the ordinance of Franklin Township, we are very concerned that the planning board may approve something that does not, does not conform either to the master plan or the scenic corridor overlay ordinance. Here in the time of a warming planet, increased violent storms, droughts, and rising temperatures, and efforts by more than half the countries in the world to stop global warming, here we are tonight with a planning board that according to the council doesn't want to hear from us because everything is already set. Your job is not to decide who is stronger and who has the most lawyers and how to appease them.
Ma'am, you're at, you're at your two minutes or exceeded it.
Okay.
Joe Hoffman, five Congress Court, Canal Walk. I too wanted to opine on the scenic corridor. I think we've pretty much killed that this evening, so I won't kill it any further. I did want to say that the sole purpose of the Canal Walk Warehouse Committee is just to ensure that Franklin Township abides by its ordinances, regulations, and guidelines. But I do have a question. Did Franklin Township apprise B9 Schoolhouse owner LLC that Metlers Road was designated as a senior corridor, scenic corridor, as defined by the township prior to their purchase of the property?
Well, I can tell you that they've been alerted to that. I don't personally know.
Prior to the purchase?
I don't know when they purchased it.
Okay. Okay. I mean, could we find out? Could we get an answer to that at our next meeting?
I don't know that there is, I don't know that we can provide an answer. I mean, if the applicant.
Well, yes, there's, I think.
Purchased the property and did so, you know, of their own free will, and then they decided to build something on it, then that's when they would approach the town with a plan or an application. And the professionals like Mark would review it and obviously inform the ordinance. Whether an applicant would have reached out prior to actually making an application, I don't know that it's something we would ever be able to know.
Yeah, I guess our point is, it's something we think is incredibly important for them to know prior to the purchase of what they were going to be held to in terms of the ordinance stipulations. I mean, it's common sense, I think, but.
I wouldn't disagree with you, and I would say that, you know, if an applicant comes to the board and is unaware of that, and we say to them, hey, you know, this is a scenic corridor, and we'd like you to, you know, ensure that your setbacks are what they are, and that you put all these trees in, and that you landscape in such a way, and that you don't put loading docks or driveways in front, and they can't do that, they would have wasted a lot of time and they won't get their application approved. So, I mean, I don't know that the board can, and I think we discussed this when we were discussing the ordinance, I think Bob Thomas said it best, is he's like, we don't know until we actually get the packet what an applicant has done. And if they don't do their due diligence, that's their risk that they're going to all these well-compensated individuals here for the night for no reason whatsoever, so.
Hi, my name's Jan Brant, and I live at 22 Bryant Court. And I could actually answer that question, and Mr. Healy's there, but that applicant did not know it was on a scenic corridor because I was the one that asked Mr. Healy if it was on a scenic corridor. And he said it wasn't on a scenic corridor, and I asked him to look it up, and he looked it up, and he said it was on a scenic corridor, and the application had already been submitted.
And Ms. Brant?
Yes.
And I did that by looking at the map that I personally prepared.
Right, I know, yeah.
So just so you understand, the map that you're holding up, I prepared.
I know.
So I'm aware of what properties. When you asked me out of the blue.
Okay, all right.
On an application that I have not yet reviewed, which I've made clear to you a number of times.
Okay, but that's not why I'm here. Okay, starting now. So I'm here because I sent you an email, Mr. Healy, and I asked you that I wanted Lot 60 clarified. And you said in 1998 that the northerly, the northerly portion of Lot 60 was zone M1, and that the southerly portion was RR3. I have several documents here in a special.
So let me interrupt you for a second. If this is between you and Mark, you could go into the planning or zoning office and...
No, no, it's not.
All right.
I want to tell the planning board.
Then please address the board now, Mark.
Sorry, okay. So anyway, the, the last ordinance that was passed, when M1 and M2 went into BI, they have all the lots listed. Lot 60 is not there. And that, besides it not being there, on that lot, when everything was changed over, I also have other documents, the Comprehensive Farm and Preservation Plan, where it shows that it's not, it actually shows on that one, and that was, if it was changed back in 1998, like you indicated, I have on this plan, and this was 2007, that Lot 60, Block 514, Lot 60, was actually RR3. So I, I think that there has been a big error, and there's not Lot 60. Why would they make a Lot 60 and M1 on scenic corridor? That is a total error. I have five different documents that Mark Healy has his signature on, that Lot 60 is not an M1, it's not a B1, BI, it's indicated as a RR3. And you said back in 1998, why would it not be listed on the ordinance that was back in May 2020, when everything was, not May 2020, December 2020, when we had the second surge of the pandemic and you all met, and to make that, to pass that ordinance, that was not listed there. So there's been a big mistake. Lot 60 is not BI.
I mean, without, without a tax map before us, I don't know, I can't answer that question.
I have a tax map.
No, 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 I don't. I don't. This is between, this is between you and, this is between you and Mark.
Teddy brought it up to Mark, and he, he wrote to me that it's not, but I had found all the evidence that it's not.
Okay, I've spent probably hours.
Me too.
Answering your questions, and you now have something new. If you want to provide that to me, I will look into it and give you more answers. But I can't answer something that I'm being presented on the spot. So if you give it, give me something, you tell me what you're looking at, where you found these different things, I'll look it up, and I'll let you know what I found. But I can't react on the spot to dockings I haven't seen.
Okay, okay.
Well, I'm going home after this. You need another day, I assume, not tonight.
Yeah, I mean, just do it during.
Send me an email, I'd be happy to meet you.
There's, there's got to be an answer. I mean, see, the internet's out, so we'll find the answer, but.
That's, that's been an error, but anyways.
Good evening, my name is Jim Salomos, and I live at 73 15 Minute Main Lane here in Somerset. I live in Canal Walk, and I'm a proud member of the Citizens Warehouse Action Group. We're hoping and praying that we have found a couple chinks in the builder's armor relative to getting this approval. Number one, the scenic overlay, and number two, the DEP requests for wetlands waiver. So I'm hoping that perhaps you can guide us as to the status of the application submitted by the builder, developer, call them what you want, on May 27th, to get the wetlands waiver approved so he can build this warehouse in Wetlands.
That's not our jurisdiction, that's the DEP.
Thank you.
Heck has it been determined that there is wetlands?
Well, they have submitted to the DEP. There's an LOI, and they'll have to go to DEP, and I think that's what made folks aware of the application, was they, similar to when the application eventually goes before this board, they'll have to notice everybody within 200 feet.
Okay.
They had to do the same thing for their application to the DEP.
Quick answer is, none of us know if there are wetlands there until NJDEP tells us.
Again, I, the last comment I want to say about an application that's before this board is, there is, my recollection is that there's an LOI. What DEP does or does not allow is up to the DEP.
You haven't found any bald eagles either, have you?
DEP.
Excuse me, we can't be talking when you're not up at the mic. Thank you.
Can't record it when you're back there. Any other members of the public wishing to speak?
My name is Shirley Tallman, and I live at 57 Tallman Lane. Good evening to you all. I've been holding this up, obviously, as a prop, and I wanted to, I know you've been enjoying my posters, so I wanted to share with you, this is not really a cartoon. Many of you, I know, go home to Franklin Township and the surrounding area at night. Some of you may not, some of you may live in other places. But clearly, we all live here, and we don't view it this way. Matter of fact, we don't view it this way at all. We view it this way.
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt again, but that can't go uncorrected. We all live here in Franklin Township, every person you're looking at, not only you, all of us.
Thank you.
We don't go home to some other community.
Thank you for clarifying.
So don't let that float out there and have people think.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Well, maybe you should fact check.
I was under another impression.
Maybe you should fact check.
And I will, I will check that out.
Okay, good, you check it out.
Mr. Rafique? I'll check that out. But you interrupted me.
I did, yes.
And I'd like to continue. This is our view. This is what we look at when we look at the lot that is under discussion here on Metlers and Schoolhouse. We see wildlife, we see the trees, we love it, and we don't want to see it destroyed. And we've all spoken to that tonight, and you know that you have a very unhappy group of voters here. So please, take this as seriously as we are. Thank you.
Anybody else who needs to come forward? If not, make a motion to close the public portion.
Senator.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that brings us to our one application tonight, 58 Atrium Drive LLC, PLN 22-00005.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to the members of the board. My name is Jim Stahl, S-T-A-H-L. The firm, I've been here before, is Golden Foley Vineyard, O'Harmann and Stahl, in North Prenzic, New Jersey. Ms. Woodward, may I assume that we have jurisdiction with regard to the affidavit of publication and service?
You may.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The application, I have three proposed witnesses tonight. I've tried to compact it. This is an application for, in addition to an existing warehouse at Atrium Drive and Davidson's Avenue, which now consists of approximately 70,642 square feet, and if approved and constructed, would be an additional 70,038 feet, or 70,380 feet approximately. Is a permitted use in the zone consistent with other uses presently being used in that area? The owner applicant is expanding this for his own use, not for another tenant. They are in the electronics distribution business because of their having issues with the more business, they want to consolidate their business, more of their business here at this location. As you are here, from Mr. Ardman, my engineer, who's also involved in operations or is aware of that, there will be additional employees, and I have Ms. Dolan here who will testify as to the parking and the traffic concerns, if any, at this location. The warehouse will be, the addition will be a warehouse and a small office for warehouse control, as we call it. I have an applicant, I have the representative applicant here if, if the board has questions, but otherwise, I have Mr. Ardman, my professional engineer, and the PP. I have Mr. Robert Longo, the architect, and I have Ms. Betsy Dolan, who is the traffic engineer. But I usually do, subject to the chairman and council, I'm going to qualify Mr. Ardman first as a PE and a PP. I normally do not do a Q and A, as you know. I'll ask Mr. Ardman to tell us what the existing conditions and operations are. I'll then ask Mr. Ardman to tell us what the proposed project is. and what is going to result at that location. I will then ask him to describe the variances. When that is done, he will testify as to his capacity as a professional planner. And then, subject to the chairman, I would then have Mr. Ardmann go through the staff reports, make any comments that he has, to the extent we can or cannot comply. I think it's, there are very few, if any. When he is done with that, then I will put on Mr. Longo, who is our architect, who will describe the building materials, color, and the sample, not a sample, this isn't residential, but the proposed floor plan. Then my cleanup batter will be Betsy Dolan, who is an experienced, as you all know, she's been here, a traffic engineer. I've given Ms. Woodbury my, the form with regard to names and addresses of the proposed witnesses. We are here today to be able to set it up electronically. As Mr. Brown knows, the last time I was here, by then, witnesses did not comply, and I apologized to him, and I made sure that these gentlemen and gentlewoman, but I don't think she has an exhibit. All right, so Mitch, why don't you stand up?
Raise your right hand, somebody swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, to help you God.
Yes, I do.
Name and professional address for the record, please.
Mitchell Ardmann, A-R-D, M-N, 575 Route 28, Raritan.
And what is the firm you're associated with?
I'm the president of the Reynolds Group. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, as well as licensed planner, testified before this board on numerous occasions, and both licenses are still current.
Excellent. So you are accepted to testify as both a planner and an engineer, and we've seen you many times before, so he's accepted.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mitch, you know my drill with you. I mean, unless you forget something, which you're unlikely to do, I may jump in and interrupt you. If not, I'm just gonna let you run with the existing conditions, existing operations, and then give us the result, variances, opine as a planner, and then we'll go through the reports. And I'll try not to talk again for a while.
Very good. Okay, so what you see on the screen is a colorized version of our Sheet 4 that's in your set. The last revision on that sheet is 7622. And that shows the entire site on the property. On the top of the screen there is Davidson Avenue. To the right, we have Route 287. That's right in the location of the overpass on Davidson Avenue there. Directly across Davidson is the Rotor Cliff property. And then, when you come to the south side or the left of the property, that is Atrium Drive. So we're at the corner of Atrium and Davidson. It's Block 46801, Lot 24.01, and the property is about 11.86 acres.
Mr. Stahl, it does not have to be marked, it's just simply a colorized version of what was submitted with the application, correct?
Yes, Mr. Clark, and everything that would be presented, except that in one document, or in the file, in your files.
You'll let us know which one that is.
Yeah, I think Mr. Longo may have one exhibit that I'm gonna ask you to accept, even though it's not provided 10 days prior, but I think it's a colorized version. But I'll let Mr. Longo identify that. Thank you.
Yep. So the existing building on the property, we have shaded here in the lighter tan color, as well as existing parking. The entire site is basically, in front of that existing building is a parking lot. As most of you, I'm sure, know, this was the site of the former convention center, hence all the parking that you see on the corner on the street there. The site currently has loading in front of the parking, which faces Davidson Avenue. There is a right turn-in, right turn-out driveway on Davidson Avenue. Access to the rest of the site, you make the left down Atrium Drive, and there's an existing driveway on the east side, or what I'm calling the rear of the property. In Mr. Healy's report, you see a good aerial map that basically shows all that parking in front of the building at this time. There is an existing stormwater management pond, a wet pond, in the easterly corner of the property, as I'm showing. And along the south side, along Atrium Drive, parking is as close as 27 feet. And I'll get to that later, because that's an existing variance condition, which we will be continuing with this proposed project. So that's pretty much the existing conditions for this site. As far as what's proposed, as you heard, we're proposing in the darker brown color forward, and basically in the Atrium Drive side of the property, in addition of approximately 70,380 square feet. And that will be, as you heard, primarily warehouse building. There'll be just a small building for the warehouse, a small office portion for the warehouse manager, but the intent is for additional warehouse space. Again, as you heard, the applicant's business has been growing. They've been there approximately five years. And they are in dire need for more space in the building, for both their growth and bringing in some space they currently have out of the area. They want to incorporate it all onto this property. So what we are proposing, besides the building addition, are loading docks on the easterly side. So those will be fully screened from Davidson Avenue by the building. There'll be 10 proposed loading docks, as well as one drive-in door into the building. As I noted, there is the existing driveway off of Atrium Drive. That'll be slightly modified, it'll be moved a little bit further east and widened, and the radiuses will be improved. This basically rear loading area has been designed, and with staff as well. There were some early comments from your engineer and from Mr. Healy on that location. So we widen both the loading area and the drive to make sure that we had good truck circulation in that area, which we do. Along with the loading area, there will continue to be a driveway on the left side, as I'm showing, or the southerly side of the proposed building addition. That will provide for full circulation around the building for both cars, as well as emergency vehicles. And that'll bring you back to the existing parking lot, which will largely remain as is. And I'll restripe to make sure we have the correct and adequate number of ADA spaces in front of the building. There'll be an additional six parking spaces, which will be located in close proximity to the addition. And there's a walk from that set of parking spaces into the area. It's in the existing building, but will also go directly into the new building addition. There's an ADA space there, as well as good access. Along with those ADA spaces, we are providing the EV spaces, which are required, the make-ready spaces by your ordinance and state standard. I'll get to it, but I believe the environmental committee may have had an older version of the plan. We started this quite some time ago. But we, on the current set of plans, there are the full number of EV spots, and we will supply all those as required. As I stated, there's one variance, and that is for the driveway, that's within 50-foot setback, or a paved area. It's 27 feet is what is existing, and we're gonna continue that. And a portion of that drive will stay, and a portion will get rebuilt in that area. Site is, as noted in the B1 zone. And in regards to bulk data, meaning lot area setbacks, lot coverage, impervious coverage and building height, we are fully compliant. Not looking for any variances with the bulk standards of this application. Similarly, we meet the parking requirement as required by ordinance. As for the other site improvements we have, we have general utilities. There are water and sewer, which currently feed the site. We're gonna upgrade the water system. There were some comments from fire, as well as engineering, and so we will comply with those. I'll get to Mr. House's report. There's one technical issue, and I would just say, we will agree to satisfy Mr. House. There's a technicality that he's looking for just one fire department connection for both sections of the building. There's some technical reasons why two might be better. We will convince him. If we don't, he'll get what Mr. House wants. But we're just looking not to have that as a condition of approval, but we will satisfy him. As far as sanitary sewer, there's an existing line at the rear of the building. We're just gonna have a lateral from the new bathroom set to connect to there, so no major sewer improvements. For drainage, again, there's significant inlets and drainage throughout the property. We'll have the roof drains, the new parking lot areas basically connect to that same drainage system. We actually have a slight decrease in impervious surface with this redevelopment. Building's basically going on top of a sea of asphalt parking now, so that'll be replaced by the building. So there's basically a swap in impervious. Though there won't be any impact as far as increased stormwater runoff from the site. As far as lighting goes, it'll be primarily building lit lighting, LED lights, which you've seen for quite a while now. They provide a good even light pattern over the site. There was one comment from your engineer about some areas of diminished light, but that'll be easy for me to explain. We basically showed the new lights. There are plenty of existing lights in the existing parking lot that supplement those. So we will not be looking for a waiver on lighting, we do comply. There'll be just one post-top light, which will be at the new intersection, and make sure we light that intersection sufficiently. For the next, regarding landscaping, and hopefully you can see on this plan, we think we've enhanced the site significantly with the landscaping. Again, the sea of parking out there did have some trees in that parking area. Many of them were kind of past their time. So we will be replacing those. And we really focused along Atrium Drive. You'll see, we have placed 40 feet on center, where there were no trees previously, a whole new row of shade trees in that area. We've also provided for a combination of deciduous trees around the building, foundation plantings and ornamental trees. So we think that's a nice enhancement to the property. Again, some more along Davidson Avenue. For some trees that are out on the frontage, we've added trees to kind of backstop those, provide more screening, as well as shade in the parking area. And then, most critically to the application, because there is an ordinance standard to screen the loading as much as possible. As I said before, the loading right now is actually facing Davidson Avenue. And while it's a ways away, it is visible from there. So we'll be screening it from the bulk of the traveling public. There will be, obviously, Atrium Drive, a private drive, but as public there. So we've provided along the loading area and the large island there, a dense row of evergreen trees to block the trailer trucks as they're in that spot. We've also, on the southerly or easterly side of this driveway, also provided a dense screen of evergreens. So as you're coming up Atrium Drive around this curve here, the view of those trucks will be blocked by those evergreen trees that we're proposing. So we believe on hold that this is an upgrade for the site as far as landscaping goes, and we believe we've seen that loading area as required by ordinance. I think that is really the bulk of the site issues that we've proposed on this plan. We've submitted to the outside agencies, we're in the course of getting their approvals as well.
Mitch, can I ask a question, a clarifying question on the final report? You said there was something technical that, you know, you didn't want to make a condition of approval. Can you just clarify what that is and how that?
Certainly.
Christine's gonna.
They've got me scared to death, I tell you. Mr. Chairman, if I can, I just want to identify, I know Mr. Clark would want me to. We're dealing with a July 28, 2022 report to the planning board by Mr. House, referring to that report.
Just Item 3 in the report, where he says a single fire department connection is required. The sprinkler system for the existing building, proposed building, must be interconnected. So if you want to hear from Mr. Longo, can go into the different types of fire suppression systems, and why one may or may not work. But if it needs to be one, it will be, but we think there's a reason why the two might work well.
Okay, so you can iron that out with John.
Correct.
But when you say don't make it a condition of approval, you're saying the technical solution, obviously, will make satisfying fire prevention a condition of approval?
Agreed, yes, 100%.
Anything else, since we have that report in front of you, Mitch? Anything else on that report we have to address, or we done with that one?
We're done with that one.
Okay.
Thank you. I may have been looking at something else. Did you address the one bulk variance in the parking?
Yes, and I'll give some planning testimony in a minute on that, yes. But since we're hitting reports, health is fine. We talked about the environmental commission, so we do have the make-ready EV spaces. The roof is solar-ready. There's no plan right now for panels. It will not be a green roof, but solar will be looked at. And we have no problem actually putting anti-idling signs around the property as well. So that is fine.
Sure, the environmental commission will be happy to hear all of those things.
Yes. Sew authority, obviously, we're submitting to them, no issue, we will take care of there.
And that's the, just, again, July 19, 2022 of the FTSA, is that correct?
That's correct.
Go ahead.
CME's review letter, July 26, 2022. The big picture is, we're gonna comply. There are a few issues that I just want to put on the record, though.
Okay.
Page 2, Item B4, noted a variance for the vertical dimension of the sign. We'll reduce that to the required four feet maximum, so we will not be looking for that variance. There is, number 10, I'll get into the variance for the parking setback requirement. Number 11 is, we will be asking for a waiver for sidewalks out to the street. We do have provided internal sidewalks from the new parking area into the building for good circulation, and fully in front of the building. There's also a good drop-off location, as is cited in the report, for Uber drivers or whatever have you, so that is taken care of. We just, in this location, didn't see a need for this use for a walkway extending up to Davidson Avenue, so we would look for a waiver for that on requirement. Think the rest of that report is fine, and we can agree to dealing with that report as a condition of approval.
And just, I don't know whether I had addressed it, but that report is from CME dated July 26, 2022.
Correct.
And the last report, I think, is Mr. Healy's, am I correct?
That's correct. July 28, 2022. First page is description, under the comments. I think I just need to address Item 2, which I believe I did, which was to satisfy the board that we provided enough screening to satisfy your ordinance condition to screen the parking area off of Atrium Drive. And I believe that's, you know, as I said, the best place for loading on the site, and it's, I think, clearly better than in front of the building where it is now.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask a few questions from my report?
Absolutely.
So Mitch, just a comment number one, and I know that's kind of traffic circulation, but I think you can answer it as the site engineer.
Mm-hmm.
The existing building, you're, in essence, deactivating that as far as the large trucks.
Correct.
Can you describe what you're doing to do that?
Yeah, those loading docks will be basically closed off for tractor-trailers there. There may be drop-offs, just in general, in front of the building, I want to be clear, for your typical UPS delivery. But tractor-trailers, those will be closed off and not used for loading docks going forward.
Okay. And then, comment number two, which is the design standard that talks about minimizing the view of the loading docks. You've, I think, effectively screened that from the public road, which is Davidson, because it's entirely behind the building. But it does face Atrium Drive, which is a private road, but nonetheless, the design standard still applies.
Correct.
Can you perhaps blow up that section of the site plan, and just describe, show to the board how you've maximized your efforts to screen that loading area?
Certainly. Yep. Oop. Okay. Yeah, it is, I think, yeah. So again, there are street trees along Atrium Drive. There's a second set of shade trees in the island. And then, more significantly, the pines, there are five pine trees, which are going to be Norway spruce, five to six feet in height on planting, which will be planted in that island, and they're probably six to eight feet on center. So we've started out with a dense planting already in that area. Similarly, if you look to the bottom of the plan, from, and again, along Atrium Drive there, the grouping, those will also be the same spruce, the same height, and we have six of those planted there, again, in a compact.
Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
On the second page, item five, Mr. Longo can hit the first two bullet items. For the second two, I think I've talked about the drop-off area. I don't think you have bicycle parking out there, but if we could add a bike rack, there's actually a nice plaza in front of the building, and there would be area to add a small bike rack. That's the board's pleasure. That's not an issue at all. And I've noted the fourth bullet point, that there is a good accommodation for pickup drop-off areas in front of the building. I think as far directly addressing Mark's items, that's, those are the points.
There you go. Before you launch into your own, putting your planners out, let me just ask the board if you have any questions as a site engineer.
I have a question about the driveway around the building. I'm assuming you did it that way because it's one way in, one way out off of Davidson Avenue?
That's correct.
Any consideration given to reconfigure that driveway, making it in and out, and getting rid of the driveway around the building because it's not aesthetically pleasing?
Yeah, we actually spent quite a bit of time, Mr. Healy brought that up early in the plan, as did your engineer. You can hear from our traffic engineer, but it is really close to the overpass on 287, and to let people make a left turn in, the stacking in that area, we felt it was not good. It's also right across from RotoClip, who's been a client for 20 years, or blocking their driveway, I want to hear that. But more importantly, the, I think, blocking the flow there for the township coming over there. So good point, but we spent a bit of time looking at that.
Yeah, that's legitimate, Mrs. Longo.
And in Mr. Ardman's defense, if you will, we asked him to do a number of different scenarios that were reviewed by myself and our township's engineer.
A question on your truck traffic. These truck deliveries are basically all, I would say the applicant has control over who's coming and what's coming.
Yes.
And what's the plan for moving them in and out of the area? Directly to 287?
That is where, you can hear other lengthy testimony, but yes, we are right there. The bulk of their traffic now, they know their pattern, that's where it comes from and goes to, and that it shouldn't change with this addition.
Well, I have a concern, because I know reports that talks about proving that Atrium Drive can withstand the truck traffic coming in from Davidson Avenue. And I'm concerned that my preference would be that every truck leaves your site, turns right, and goes out to Davidson Avenue. Once it gets that intersection, they can go left or right. And I'm also concerned that they're educated to know that they can take Pierce Street to 287, or they can take a right turn on Davidson and go to 287. Otherwise, if they make any other turns to go across town, they're going through our local streets and neighborhoods.
Right.
And also, if they go left on Atrium Drive out of your facility, that winds around and comes out on World's, not World's Fair Drive, but Pierce Street, but that's a big part of the street that's not going to be proven to be able to withstand truck traffic. They shouldn't be using it.
If I may, Mitch, before you answer, not that I'm trying to cut you off, but Betsy's here, Betsy Dolan is here. It's up to you, Mitch, whether you want her to address that. And yes, the applicant has to a certain extent control over the vehicles that come and go. They're not all boat vehicles, but they have certain control over giving directions or recommendations, so that's something we can look at.
Yeah, I know that Mrs. Dolan will make her comments. I want to be sure that the, I want the applicant to have some accountability to making sure that the truck traffic goes where we want it to go, not a blanket comment that, well, this is a hard turn to make left out of that driveway, they go to another street that's crowded, it's not able to take truck traffic. I don't want to leave it, I want to leave as little as possible to the discretion of the truck drivers and have them required to do as much as possible, meaning get out of your facility, Davidson, 287.
And to your point on that, from just a site engineer standpoint, that's what I worked with CME's office to make sure there was no question that the right turn out of there was smooth and unencumbered, and also up at the corner of Davidson, we agreed to improve that existing radius to make that better. Trucks make that turn now, but they probably jumped the curb a little bit.
They take the curb often.
Yeah, right. So once we're done, that'll be improved, so that, you know, that'll encourage people to say, all right, I'm not going to bump that curb, it's, this is the easy way to go. So from a site design standpoint, we've made that easier.
And then they're going to be able, from a design point, I'm assuming, make the left turn from Davidson onto Atrium just as easy?
Yes, yeah.
Any improvements that are needed will be made?
If there are. Right now, we don't see them, but if your engineer brings it up, or if we need some, we'll make them, yes.
Okay. I just see this as an opportunity to confine this warehouse traffic to a very specific area, and I don't think we should miss that opportunity.
So Bob, if I can, we're over here. On other applications, this board has asked applicants to put signs on their own property, on their driveways. Here, I think you'd be asking them to put it on there at the exit from their loading area, as well as you're approaching Davidson from Atrium. So I think, I think you're asking them to put the signs in those two locations for their application.
That was my next call. 287 that way.
So does the applicant have any objection to incorporating that into their site plan?
No, they work with you. Mark would work with you.
And, yeah, thank you. And then just, Bob, just a little update. I think in the past, I've mentioned that the township is working on a more comprehensive signage plan. I know the applicants are, I'm sorry, our consulting engineer has addressed it there, so I think that's going to be forthcoming sometime soon.
And Mr. Ardman, that improved radius, is that on your plan already?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
All right. If there are any questions for the board, switch to Mr. Ardman as a planner.
There's one question for Mark. Is enforcement a part of that plan? Signage plan?
Yeah, I think when that, I don't know, that's really more of a question for Bob Von Lacher, who's the township manager and the prior head of the Traffic Safety Board of the Police Department. So I'm going to defer to him on that for enforcement rather than me. I'm just a mere planner, not a cop.
Yeah, you know, as a mere planner, just include a comment that we have concerns about the enforcement of it, not just the existence of it.
Yeah, I mean, I think the signage, it's two different things. I think one thing is the signage, and my understanding of the signage plan is to encourage certain movements, but then there's another thing called truck routes, and that's what's enforceable.
Just a quick question on that. When we have the comprehensive plan ready to present that we have been discussing in the last few months, the final draft, is that something that we can have approved by the council and actually have ordinances passed that would make it enforceable?
Yeah, again, I, whether you can enforce those signs, I really can't.
Not the ones on the property, you know, the people talking about.
There's going to be certain signs where I think, Davidson, for example, I mean, Davidson, I think, is going to be a road that trucks can travel on. Now, there may be a sign at the end of Atrium that says, you should go right, but if a truck goes left on Atrium, I mean, I'm sorry, on Davidson, they're allowed to be there. It's one of the truck routes.
Yeah.
So that's why I'm, I think that's an example of, I think the signage plan is trying to encourage them to go in certain directions. The other thing is the truck routes, if they're on, roads are not allowed to be on, then they can get tickets.
Okay, just trying to get a little...
So what's enforceable is you're not going to have a cruiser sitting outside of these guys making sure trucks turn right or left. But what you can have that's enforceable is weight limits, right? You know, like, we don't want truck traffic on Demont. Could the Police Department theoretically, you know, like they do, you know, twice a year with click it or ticket or whatever, set up enforcement on Demont and do that? Because there may be a sign there with a weight limit, or a bridge, for example, the one that goes into East Millstone. You could sit there and probably make some pretty good revenue, right? But that's what's enforceable, because there is actually a weight limit that they'd be violating, but not just turning.
Yeah, and I understand. I just want Mark to put that out there, and, you know, the public is here hearing about a future signage plan coming. The concern is that enforcement is behind that, and so if enforcement is not, just being clear about it right now, since it's on record, that's all. Thanks, Mark.
I think you opened another topic that's good for discussion soon at a later date, and I think there are a number of places where we need to consider weight limits, and sooner rather than later.
Mr. Ardman as a planner.
Mr. Ardman, I want to give us the short version of your planning testimony with regard to the variance.
Certainly. So this will be a, basically a C2 variance, and basically that we believe this is a better planning alternative for this site. We believe the design option that we presented works well with the property and that it provides full circulation around the building. As noted, there is already pavement in that area. We're going to just be utilizing it now for circulation around the building. It will be the same 27 feet that it is now, will be no closer. As also stated, we're providing significant landscaping along Atrium Drive, and I think that as far as the design for the site will enhance the site in general and soften the pavement that is out there and any impact to the traveling public. I believe from a municipal land use standpoint that two purposes of the municipal land use law are furthered by letting us have this variance in this application to go through, 40:55 D2, as you're aware, and that would be item G, to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses, this being industrial use, both public and private, according to the respective environmental requirements. And I think we've shown that this is a good location for this use and for this driveway around the building, also for purpose I, to promote a desirable environmental environment through creative developmental techniques. And again, I believe we're saving existing pavement, which is good. It's not just ripping it up and repaving and also planting the new trees. So with those two purposes, the act that I believe are furthered, I believe it supports the application. I don't believe there's any net negative impacts by granting that variance. Again, there is pavement in that location for our parking lot, and there's no landscaping at this time. There's also no net increase in impervious due to this. As you heard, I said there's actually a decrease on the site, so impervious will not be an issue. I believe the benefits substant, outweigh the, any negatives, which I don't see, and this variance can be granted.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just follow up with a few questions?
Please.
All right, with respect to the two pros and the negative criteria, do you see any substantial detriment to the public good by granting this variance?
I do not.
Do you see any substantial impairment to this municipality's zone plan or its zoning ordinance if this variance were to be granted?
For the reasons I stated, I do not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Mitch, just to be, just to be clear, I'm reading Mark's report with this variance. So it's an existing condition now because of the parking lot.
Correct.
The building itself actually complies.
That is correct.
But the reason that you still need the variance is because of the drive aisle.
That is correct.
So in essence, the main reason for having a setback being the building is in essence complying, but because of the technicality, if you will, not technicality, but you know what I mean, because of the more minor condition of simply having the drive aisle there, it still necessitates this already existing condition.
That's correct, and although it is a private street, technically, the ordinance does still apply, so it's not technically a public road either.
Okay.
Thank you.
And there's the reason you need the driveway. This is one of the things that we were going over with Mitch as far as, you know, different site plan scenarios. You need that driveway because in order for people who are parking in the car parking area to make a left, they have to access Atrium because of the right-only restriction on Davidson.
That is correct.
Good point. I would just like to make another point, as I know John House generally wants to have access for fire engines to as many sides of a building as possible, and this drive provides that.
That is correct, and we reviewed it with Mr. House.
Yeah, that is a good point, Ted. That is one of the things that we talked about as well, you know, could, if, even if we were able to, you know, if they were able to redo that, you know, would John want the drive there anyway? Because would the, would the building be close enough to Atrium where Atrium could provide that 360, and he didn't think it did, so he actually, Mitch, remind me if I'm correct, if I'm remembering this correctly, but I think John wanted that driveway there for emergency access.
Correct. Atrium was too far a distance from the building.
I will have something more to say about that when Ms. Dolan is up.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no other questions at this time, I'd call Mr. Jones. Jones? Oh, gee, why do I call Bob Jones? I did that in the hall, I'm sorry. It's insulting, I apologize.
It's another attorney friend of yours, I'm sure.
Actually, it's...
I remember Bob Jones, anyway.
Bob Jones is now a judge. If you can, please, tell me, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you out.
I do.
Name and address, please.
Robert Longo, Cornerstone Architectural Group, office address 202 Hamilton Boulevard, South Plainfield, New Jersey. Licensed architect in multiple states, my first license was in New Jersey 33 years ago. I'm also licensed professional planner, I'm also an adjunct professor, I'm also a certified interior designer.
Your license in New Jersey is still good, right?
My license in New Jersey is still good.
Fantastic, then you're qualified.
Thank you.
Mr. Longo, do you know what to do?
I know what to do, yes. So we'll keep this brief. We submitted two drawings to the board, each have their two-dimensional floor plan and elevations, and we also have a rendering to show you today. So this is, you know, the floor plan of the addition. As Mitch mentioned, this is an addition, it's approximately equal to the size of the existing warehouse, 70,000, 70,000. The existing building is white, the addition is gray. It is strictly warehouse, with the exception of a very small piece of office, you know, in this corner. So we have a driver's, a trucker's room. I think those are for just to sequester the truckers, a trucker's bathroom, a very small shipping office, and then some bathrooms here for the staff. So the office comprises about 1%, less than 1% of the additions, about 650 square feet or so. Up in this corner, we have a fire pump room and electrical room. The balance of the space is going to be racking for warehousing. It's just as simple as it gets in terms of the warehouse building. Loading docks along the east wall with one drive-in ramp, and that essentially is how the building's going to function. It obviously connects to the existing buildings, a small connection, so the building is obviously slid forward towards Davidson, and there's a small connection here where the two buildings will, two parts of the building will connect. Just show you the rendering, we have, so this has not been submitted, so I guess this would be an exhibit.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Longo. This has not been previously provided to the board. Why don't I identify this as A1, Mr. Clark?
Questions, if I could? How is this generated, Bob?
This is generated, type of software? This came out of my office.
Under your direction?
Under my direction, yes.
Fine, thank you very much.
I outsourced this.
A1. A1, thank you.
Okay, so we're looking at, just to orient you, this is a view, basically coming over 287, as you're heading south on Davidson Avenue. This is the, let me see if I can get the pointer, get the pointer on here, let's do this, there we go. Okay, the existing building goes from here to here, so that's the existing, was the exhibition hall. The office entrance is tucked behind this tree, you can see it's a brown color, it's actually brick, the rest of the building is painted concrete, and these are the existing loading docks, again, at face Davidson. So our addition is everything, you know, from here to the right. So our addition is everything, you know, from here to the light. We're proposing a concrete building, concrete panels, steel frame, painted colors to match the field of the building. We painted concrete to match the existing concrete panels. These brown accents will be scored and then painted to match the color of the existing brick, which is way over on this side of the building. There's really no entrance on this side. There's a couple of doors you see here. These are exit doors or ingress doors. They're not really meant for public access. There's a door here to the fire pump room, but these doors are utility doors. They're not really meant to be entrances. The meat of the building is behind, you know, back the loading dock. We took this landscaping fairly strictly for, in terms of rendering, from Mitch's landscape plan, so this should fairly accurately show exactly where these trees are as best we could, you know, as an architect, showing the type of trees and their approximate size at maybe, say, 10 or 15 years from, from planting. This is what the building should look like. There was a question in the report about the materials on all sides of the building. The materials will be the same all around the building. So this is what it will look like on all four sides. You're seeing obviously two of those sides. And you'll notice that our building is a little taller. Obviously, the standards now for warehouses are a little different. Our building is taller than the existing building. That's just to accommodate the modern needs of a warehouse. I think that's all I have, unless there's any questions.
Any questions, sir, this witness?
I just want to thank them for using our great technology. It really helps the board see these images, so you've set the standard moving forward.
You're welcome. You have bigger screen, though, to be honest. We all need a bigger screen.
We have one. We thought your drawing was too small, so we didn't bring it up, yeah.
Thank you, it's proud. All right, Betsy.
Can you raise your right hand? Thank you. I solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out.
Yes, I do.
Please give us your name and address.
Elizabeth Dolan, D-O-L-A-N, Dolan &amp; Dean Consulting, 181 West High Street in Somerville, New Jersey.
And you are licensure?
I am a licensed professional engineer. My license was recently renewed, so it is in good standing.
How long have you been an engineer?
I take it back. She's accepted.
Thank you.
I retract it.
Sure. So we prepared a standard traffic impact analysis for this warehouse expansion, and to do that, we counted the actual driveway movements. It's an existing site. It's going to be expanded, so we don't need to go to the ITE and estimate. We can actually take the existing driveway movements at 50 Atrium, and then we expanded them based on the proposed building area, which is almost a doubling of the traffic. It's not a particularly busy site during the morning peak hour, 30 entering, four exiting, for a total of 34 driveway movements. And then in the evening peak hour, 13 entering, 52 exiting, for a total of 65. The, the area roadway network, we studied the intersection of Atrium Drive and Davidson, and, you know, there's a lot of vacancies in the area now, so the traffic volumes are much lower than they historically were. And we have level of service C coming out of that intersection and in the morning, and a B in the evening, A coming into Atrium Drive off of Davidson. And our projected driveway movements are A, B, and C for the morning and evening peak hours. So it's at the high end of the level of service scale, a little delay at the intersection and at the driveways. For the future condition, we routed the traffic the same way that, that we counted it entering and exiting. And just because there's been some discussion about the truck activity, we had one truck come into the site during the morning peak hour and two leave, and the evening was busier with trucks, four entering and five exiting. And I did note, because I had time to check the counts, there was one truck that did come in from the, the back end of Atrium, otherwise everything was oriented to and from Davidson Avenue. I think that based on some of the discussion we had a little bit ago tonight, that the most direct route, the fastest way to 287 is turn right out of Atrium or the site driveway, and then head up Davidson to Easton. So I think that that's an appropriate truck routing. And just to hit on the driveway design, because Mitch talked about it, but that was something that we've, we've talked about for several months as the application was being prepared. The way that bridges over 287, there's not necessarily a site distance issue, but there is guy rail across most of our frontage. You don't really see the Atrium Drive intersection as well as you might think. And to introduce lefts between Atrium and the, the overpass, I think would be problematic in that it's, it's not an expected turn, and to have a truck waiting on Davidson to turn left into the site, I don't think would be appropriate. And then also what Mitch mentioned, and it is on the, the top of the site plan, there's a driveway just between our right-in, right-out driveway and the 287 overpass, it's rotor clips driveway. And if we were to have a full movement driveway at our site, the lefts would conflict. So someone waiting to turn left into our driveway would impede the ability for someone to turn left into rotor clip. So for all of those reasons, we did not feel that it was appropriate to make that a full movement driveway, combined with the relatively low volumes associated with this use. And as I said, we pretty much doubled the activity for our analysis, but as has been discussed tonight, the, the space that's proposed is a warehouse. And so while there might be an increase in the employee activity, I, I would not expect it to be necessarily a doubling of the traffic, so I think it's conservative. And I would also point out that because there's a lot happening in this area, we did include in our future projections the traffic from, from two developments. One is the, I guess it's Hampton Inn that's under construction. Maybe by now it's done. And then also on Atrium, our office is working on the Puleo application for another warehouse. I know that's been submitted, not approved, but we did include it, and basically it's the same analysis in both reports, because we included all the traffic from these, from these proposed uses that will be generating traffic and impacting the Davidson Avenue intersection. With regard to the site plan, I think Mitch took you through the whole thing. There's no parking variance. The site circulation's been worked out with, with fire and truck circulation requirements, appropriate two-way circulation aisles for passenger vehicles, so it's a pretty standard design in terms of onsite circulation and access for the different vehicle types that will be entering and exiting the site for this use.
Good question. Is it valuable or even possible to consider a left-turn lane, restriping Davidson into, with a left-turn lane into Atrium Drive?
We could take a look at that. I'm not sure what the width is there. If the width was available, I mean, we're already going to make some modifications to the, to the intersection radius. I think I'd have to take a look at the taper requirements on either side of that left-turn lane, but we could, we could definitely take a look at that.
Okay, did you also conclude in your projections potential development of the old Holiday Inn site?
No. We, we were preparing the report for this application and Puleo pretty much at the same time, so we knew that all that was, you know, we couldn't put one report in without the other. So beyond that, I didn't look at any other approved development.
This isn't approved development, but the motel is vacant, and there are the ever-present rumors that it is...
I think I may have issued a proposal for a traffic study on that, yeah.
And it probably, actually, the, that building and the one immediately beside it are empty with potential development. Davidson was originally a fairly wide two-lane highway. Maybe it is valuable to start looking at left-turn in lanes. I, I don't know, you're the expert.
Right, well, we can definitely look at that for the Puleo application. That's going to be before you, I think, in another month, or as a condition of this approval, you know, to, to work with your engineers and come up with a striping plan for that. And whenever, I, I know I've got another project, 195, I think, Davidson for another warehouse. That one's been on hold for a while. So there's, there's definitely going to be a lot more happening in the corridor. And so we've taken it as far as what we know is happening right now, but not any speculation on potential redevelopment.
All right, we're making that a condition to look at that would be more...
Yeah, I mean, the more information we have about, you know, development in the area, and, you know, one of the things I was going to say is I find it refreshing that you actually did look at, you know, pending applications, because I remember not too long ago, we had an application, and we asked this question. In fact, it was probably Bob that asked the question. And, and the, the traffic engineer, who I wasn't all that impressed with, was like, well, we don't know, well, you know. But there's a way to find out. She has the township. It's really not that difficult to kind of find out, look at a holistic kind of view of what's going to impact the area, whether your office is working on it or not. So, I mean, I thought that was, you know, thank you for doing that. And, but I would echo what Bob said. The more, the more information that comes in, I mean, this is an area that should be a little, not too controversial when it comes to reuse, because it really does stand, it stands into the master plan, right? These buildings, the, the convention center, the hotels around it, empty, impervious coverage, access to major highways, not impacting neighborhoods. It's the perfect place to have adaptive reuse.
Absolutely.
And that's exactly in keeping with what our master plans has. So, I mean, I, I don't see a problem, but the thing is, like Davidson, just looking at it, it's not all that wide. I mean, maybe it's time to think about, like, kind of what you're leaning to, widening it, restriping it, preparing for the fact that there will be a day when it's, it's not as, less used as it is now, just because also many of these buildings are vacant.
Mr. Chairman, one follow-up question, if I could. Although you didn't take into account the Holiday Inn site, you do have a future build component in your traffic analysis.
I was just going to say that, right? And in addition to the Puleo and the hotel traffic that, that are on Atrium, we did use a background growth factor. And I think that's also conservative, because with everything that's happened in the past few years, traffic has changed in a lot of ways, but the background growth, I think we've come back to the pre-COVID volumes, but we're not seeing growth at the rate that DOT has historically provided for different counties and different road types.
Interesting. Now, I, I know that Ted promised a question, and he has his hand up, so I don't want to disappoint.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the, if a fire engine might be coming up Davidson and want to turn in the entrance directly from Davidson, and then proceed into the driveway that goes alongside the building, can it make that turn into that driveway?
I, I think we had to make sure that it would circulate that way to satisfy the, the fire marshal, but I, I just would defer quickly to Mitch.
Let me just put Mr. Arden back on to answer that question.
You're saying coming in and make the left off of Atrium into the site?
No. If, if you make a truck, a fire truck, and it might be coming from East Millstone, might be coming from Middle Bush, there's quite likely that it would be coming up Davidson and making a right turn into the front entrance there.
Gotcha.
But then want to go into the driveway alongside the building, and that looks like a pretty sharp turn.
Yeah, that turn they would not make, a right and a right, no. They would, they would make the right down Atrium and then make the left into the site.
Okay, as long as the fire companies know that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, again, why we walked it by John House. Does he disseminate them all? But they're, I think they're familiar with this facility as it is, and those movement, the way it is today, and it's been for 40 years, that, that would be, they, they would have the sea of pavement there now, so they could make some of those movements, but they know that Atrium is there as well. And that driveway on Atrium is basically the same as it's been.
Yeah, it's just the, the movement in there, the constraints on the movement in from, directly from Davidson.
That has changed, that's correct.
But, oh, you might just check it out with John if you're talking to him again, and to say, you know, we want the fire companies to know that this is the way to do it.
Sure.
Hopefully, it'll never be needed, but...
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, if there are no other, are there any questions pending? I don't think so.
Any other questions for the board, for Ms. Dolan? All right. We will need to open to the public, and then I will turn it back over to you for what you might have. So motion to open to the public for a hearing for any comment on this particular application.
I'll second it then.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is open, and only comment on this particular application will be allowed. I'll shut it down if there's anything else.
Kiki Anastasikos, 3204 Unclaved Circle, Canal Walk. Could you please tell us how many trees were cut in order to, and how old were those trees in order to accommodate for the new structure?
It was being built in a parking lot.
Yeah.
So this, this was a parking lot prior to...
Yeah, I mean, if you've paid attention to anything in this application, it's all impervious coverage already, and they're actually adding more trees than are there now.
So prior to the parking lot, were there trees? Or was it...
It's a parking lot. Trees don't grow, I mean, there were parking, islands.
When was the parking lot built?
When, when the convention center was, was built.
Okay, were there trees then? And how many trees were taken down at that time? Of construct...
We may not be old enough to know.
It's irrelevant, you know. That's what's on-site now. We're actually improving what was on-site. We're not going to restore it to a forest.
Okay. My other question is for the architect. Is it common practice to show the trees in the rendering of what the landscaping is looking, is going to look like 15 years from now? So you're showing the trees that you're planning to plant after 15 years from the time of the construction of this new, of this second building? And how does that, how does that accommodate the people of Franklin Township that have to look at this additional ugly structure? Because I think there is not a person in this room that would agree that there is anything aesthetically pleasing about warehouses. Isn't it misleading to show the trees at 15 years from now rather than showing them at the time of the planting, which you stated those trees are five to six feet, which is about, slightly above me, I'm 5'2", about slightly above me, I'm 5'2", okay? So, don't you think that that's misleading?
Have you driven by this site at all? You don't have to answer that, by the way. I'll take care of this one.
Oh.
Have you driven by it at all?
No, but I see the rendering. Look at the trees.
Yeah, okay.
How tall is this structure?
No, no, listen to me. Look at the site now. And all you see are dead trees, a parking lot, and islands. This is a vast improvement over that, trust me. If you're not familiar with the site, I mean, what are they supposed to show unless, you're not going to plant 30?
They're supposed to show the trees of five feet, which would bring them way below. This is misleading, it's illegal and to false advertising.
Can you use some common sense?
I'm using common sense, sir.
No, no, you're not. And I'll tell you why.
I think the rendering should use common sense.
No, I'll tell you why you're not. Because unless you're planting 30 or 40-foot trees to begin with, which no one I know does, if you go out to a nursery and get a tree and put it in your yard, what is it going to be? It's going to be eight to 10 feet high or five or whatever you buy it as, and eventually it's going to grow. And they're showing something that looks.
15 years from now? And you don't find that misleading for the layman in this room? You don't find that misleading?
I'm losing the battle. All right.
Okay, I'm sure you are.
I'm just making a comment.
We appreciate the comment. I think it also would be misleading to show them as they are now only and paint the picture that they won't grow to the height that they are shown here. So if it's misleading to see them fully grown, it's also misleading to see them as they will be just in one period of time. So both things can be true.
And they do show us the rendering and also make the statement, as you mentioned yourself, that they are planted at six to eight feet tall. We are not stupid. We can digest that, okay? We know we're not getting trees like that.
I just also want to say, if you can take a few minutes and drive down there and take a look at it. So the trees, the landscaping, is a much improvement, you know? Just take a look at it. Drive by there, you know, go on Davidson, go down Atrium, come around it and take a look at it.
Shirley Tomlin, 57, Tomlin Lane. I have a question for the traffic engineer, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know the style, so you'll have to forgive me. My witnesses will answer when you call them to answer.
Yeah.
Well, then, I'm sorry.
This is a non-confrontational.
No, that's okay.
The chairman runs the meeting.
I'm just the board.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, I wonder about, do you have a concern about how many 18-wheelers you're dumping, we are dumping, onto 287? Is that something that concerns you as a traffic engineer?
No.
Could you just give me briefly how that can concern you?
Well, the, first of all, it's an interstate, so it's built for trucks and moving goods and people. And number two, as I had testified, this is not a particularly busy use, this warehouse, and the number of truck trips at an hour is limited. And so I don't find it to be a problem in terms of capacity. I can tell you that I know 287 is well-traveled and well-used, and peak hours are more than just two hours a day there. But this is an adaptive reuse of property that is a nominal traffic generator with a small percentage of trucks.
I understand that, but there's a multiple factor here because I think, as someone said this evening, we're going to be seeing a lot more warehouses. And it concerns me that obviously every time there's a warehouse, there are 18-wheelers. And, you know, they're all being dumped onto 287. And I guess where I would differ with what you have said here is that there is a big problem on 287. The backup of traffic is deplorable.
Bad.
It's bad, and we continue to add to it. So I would like our board, please, to think about that. But, you know, 287 is not a convenient dump-off. We all use it. And that should be taken into consideration when you think about adding these warehouses. And also, one other thing, I don't know how much time I've left, but just a quick one here about the tree issue and the blacktop. Unfortunately, I don't recall the term, but there is a very legitimate article, and I will bring it the next time or send it to the board, about the blacktop. You know, we are getting to be a hotter planet all the time. I'm sure you'll agree. Look at the weather we're having here, unprecedented. And there is a phenomenon about that heat bearing down on blacktop and what it does. The heat intensifies times, I don't know how, what the factor is, but the article spells it out. And we are adding heat to the place that we live that's already hot. So, you know, it's not that far-fetched. It's real. And it isn't rocket science, it's understood. So please, also consider that. You know, when you talk about the blacktop that I heard about here from this gentleman, not a good thing. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I just want to point out that this application actually decreases, I mean, your point about urban heat islands or whatever is totally valid, but this application decreases the previous coverage and really decreases the pavement because you now have a building. Now, does the building absorb and reflect heat? Yes, but not like pavement. You're going to have more landscaping there to mitigate that than you did before. So I look at this whole thing as sort of a net positive with regard to that.
Heat Island is the term that you were looking for, and the Environmental Commission is concerned about this. And for every one of these warehouse applications, one possibility is what they call a green roof, which actually cools the building because you have vegetation on the roof and it's sort of extra insulation that keeps the building cooler in summer and warmer in winter. Another possibility is having solar cells on the roof, which uses the radiation instead of just letting it heat the building. And another possibility is to paint the roof white or even reflecting so that more of the incident radiation is reflected and, rather than being absorbed and then re-radiated as infrared radiation, which is more heat. So, you know, we do have these considerations in mind. Another thing is planting more trees absorbs more carbon dioxide and provides shade. Actually, I've been looking at that literally. I don't think it has as many trees as the planes show. Is this looking from the south side of Atrium Drive toward the building? Does the plane show trees all the way up Atrium Drive to Davidson?
This is you, Davidson, looking south on Davidson. Yeah. You looking, Davidson looking, looking towards, I'm sorry, towards the south. So if you're crossing 287, heading south on Davidson, look to your left, is what you would see. I believe that it very accurately depicts the landscape plan.
No, it's just a question of exactly what the point of view is.
Okay. Well, we're still in the public session, we still have somebody who wants to speak, so let's.
Thank you. Jan Brandt, 22 Bryant. And I think it's great that this building's being reused and it's away from residential area, so kudos to you guys. I might have missed it. What's going to be a warehouse for?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, it's existing as electronics, distribution, warehousing.
Okay. And is there any, I guess, any green attributes, you know, solar paneling or things that would, you know, help the environment?
Well, it is solar-ready, but it's not, panels are not being installed. We have the electric car stations. Other than that, I'd look for Mitchell Long though.
Yeah, I mean, the existing building has solar panels on it, almost as much of a threat. And we'll certainly be looking at potentially adding solar panels. We'll be solar-ready, I'm not necessarily going to commit to adding solar panels, but the building is, you know, has about 50,000 square foot of solar panels, as it says, maybe 60,000. So it's, you know, from that aspect, they've done a good job there. Whether the building can support more, we'll investigate.
Good evening. Alex Strauss, 285 Haslett Way, Somerset. Not Canal Walk, but I am with you, just fashion choice. And speaking of that, yeah, I guess you could say I'm against this project. It'd be nice to have a warehouse, as in W-E-A-R, as in clothing stores and things that we might need. Why isn't the redevelopment even involved with that side of town, Wyoming, Hamilton Street area? I don't understand. Now, if we can maybe flip back to the original, to the last panel, I don't know, you know, it wasn't mentioned at all, but, okay, I'm not, I don't entirely like the fact that the convention center's not there, but that's the way it is, okay? But currently, you have the trucks on the other side, okay, on the, I guess it would be the top right area. Now they're going to be in the lower left, which would be closer to the double tree. And I know we hear a lot about, oh, landscaping, landscape. Landscaping doesn't block all noise, come on. And what if I want to go back and take a nap? I'm staying at the double tree and I'm going to hear some noise from that area? Come on, okay? Also, yeah, somebody mentioned about aesthetics. Well, you know, warehouses, aesthetics, okay, they'll try to make them look good, but remember what Atrium was. Atrium at Somerset was almost like a showpiece as far as the office buildings, okay? These glass structures, they were built to look really nice. So I don't know where we're going to get there. Also, traffic, okay, so now trucks really don't want to use to make a right onto Davidson because they're mostly being the loading dock area there. So now they're going to be mixing with more vehicles like on Atrium, okay? They're going to have to mix with those vehicles and make a right because they're not going to go around the building, are they? And then how about the people who are exiting, who are in the top right corner? How about those people, okay? Suppose they want to go left onto Davidson, okay? That's where they're going, that's the direction they're heading. Well, I think instead of going around the building, they're going to make a right there and then they're going to make a U-turn, okay? Because that's what people do these days, okay? That's what people do, okay? You like it or not. So there are a lot of things. Again, we can't forget our hotels. We can't forget our hotels. Our hotels have taken a dive, we've seen it, okay? I worked 1978 with the Somerset, Marriott opened up as a showplace.
Your time is exceeding, we don't need a history lesson. But I would just point out, there's hotels in Manhattan, so there's probably some noise there, so. All right, anybody else from the public commission to speak? If not, I make a motion to close the public portion.
I'm with you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Turn it back to Mr. Stahl for.
Yeah, I don't normally make closing statements unless it's necessary. This board, I've been here before, we've all paid very close attention, and I would just ask that the board affirmatively pass a resolution for preliminary and final major site plan amended approval with the C variance for the run-bogue variance on the parking lot issue.
Thank you, Mr. Stahl. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion and I'm going to ask Jim to capture the details for the motion, motion to approve.
A motion to approve would be for amended preliminary and final site plan approval, a variance to allow the continuing non-conforming condition of a drive aisle within the front yard setback, and a waiver with regard to sidewalk interconnection. It would come with conditions that the applicant comply with the reports from fire prevention, health, the environmental commission particularly, that the roof is solar-ready and that we will have anti-idling signs, also subject to compliance with the Sewerage Authority report, Somerset County Planning Board, DRCC, Mark Hilli's July 28, 2022 report, particularly with regard to providing a bike rack and better designate pickup and drop-off areas. Also a condition that the applicant will examine the potential for a dedicated left-hand turn lane on Davidson, which if it is, in the opinion of the applicant, feasible, then it would be up to the review and approval of the staff.
Ma'am. Oh, Ted.
Signage. I'm sorry, Mr. Signage.
A signage plan and education of drivers with regard to the truck routes reviewed and approved by the staff.
And the C2, the C2 variance, you mentioned that. So with those conditions, I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman and Barson?
Yes.
Paul Hough?
Yes.
Mahir Fik?
Yes.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Jennifer Magna?
Yes.
Charles Byrne?
I'm going to vote yes, but I really want to thank the public for coming out. I mean, I really wish, you know, more people would attend these meetings and voice their opinions. So I want to show some appreciation for that because I think it's needed and it should be continued. So I'm going to vote yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Ressini?
I also vote yes. And I'd like to echo Charles, but I'd like to go one step further. Having been a part, when I started my career in service to Franklin Township, as a member of the Shade Tree Commission, member of the Open Space Commission, chair of the Shade Tree Commission, chair of the Planning Board, I started out attending council meetings like this. And one of the first things I helped fight was something called the Middlebush Bypass, which would have gone through the Galdi, Scott and Lemon Tovich's farms, which are now all farmland preserved. You got signs, it was right where you are. And that's how I started. I have just one thing, one piece of advice. You got some arguments when you come up here, you're clutching at straws, and it diminishes the validity of what you're really trying to accomplish. Showing pictures of butterflies, it's great, but it doesn't do anything for us because it's not a matter of whether we want Franklin developed or not. It's a matter of zoning and planning law. When you come out with cogent arguments, not size of trees, and when you're looking at an application for an hour and you tell me that it's actually going to be blacktop, when it's actually going to be less blacktop, it takes away from whatever gravitas you might be trying to do. So as somebody who's been in that audience, I just want to say, I congratulate you. It's a learning experience, I know this for a fact. Just keep learning and make your arguments crisp and make them points that we can work with. That's my only piece of advice. But I echo Charles, and anybody who wants to speak and is concerned about their township, we're glad to see that. So thank you. Butterflies do matter, but in planning law, they just don't matter, all them. I know, I know. All right, so we have any more business tonight? If not, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Stahl.